Called to order the Board of Commissioners for South County Fires Special Meeting for February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Could have those at headquarters stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Invisible. With liberty and justice for all. Moving on to approval of the agenda, we have a motion to approve. Commissioner Teoflak. Do you have a second on the motion? Commissioner Daniels. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. And as a note, Commissioner Chan is out of the country and has an excused absence for this meeting. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have item four A, our healthcare E F T claims totaling one hundred and three thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven and fifty-six cents. A motion to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Lawrence. Second on the motion. Commissioner Daniels, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to public comments. Anybody wishing to make public comment, please use the raise your hand function. You'll be recognized and elevated to the meeting where you can speak. Not seeing any requests. All right. Move on to item six, our recruit class two thousand and twenty-two dash one, our introductions and oath of office.
Commissioners. Oh, I actually it's going to be Chief Wells first. Good evening, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to introduce to you tonight, class two thousand and twenty-two dash one. This class is made up of twenty recruits, firefighters and firefighter paramedics. They started with South County on February first. And they begin the Fire Training Academy next Monday, the fourteenth of February. So this evening, I'd like to introduce to you lateral firefighter paramedic Stephen Swanson. Firefighter paramedic Tiffany Haged. Lateral firefighter paramedic Avis Tejan. Lateral firefighter Cameron Leatherman. Firefighter Ally Cuts. Firefighter Michael Intani. Firefighter Tyler Jacobson. Firefighter Stephanie Salgado. Firefighter Haley Gribble. Firefighter Don Parker. Firefighter Eric Turner. Firefighter Keegan Carlson. Firefighter John Bauer. Firefighter Sam Nielsen. Firefighter Jaden Rozell. Firefighter Marshall Hunt. Firefighter Tanner Benjen. Firefighter David Petrenko. Firefighter Carson Fulmer. And firefighter Henry Park. Welcome, class two-two dash one. And now we're going to do the swearing in, and I will turn it over to Chief Isatelo.
Okay, class twenty-two dash one, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, you hereby declare.
Aye.
That my fundamental duty is to serve. The people of South County Fire Community.
The people of South County Fire Community.
I swear to protect, safeguard, and preserve life. Health and property against fire and other perils. And to maintain a proficiency in the fire service.
And to maintain efficiency in the fire service.
I will uphold uphold the standards of my profession and position. Serve the people and members of the regional fire authority. And will share my knowledge and skills with my colleagues. I recognize the badge of my office. As a symbol of public faith and trust. And I accept, so long as I am true. The ethics of the fire service. You, as a member of South County Fire and Rescue, agree to these standards and responsibilities. Please say, I do, after the following statements. I accept this self-imposed and self-enforced obligation as my responsibility. I make these promises solemnly, freely, and upon my honor. Welcome to South County Fire.
Thank you.
Yeah, good, good job, everybody, tonight. So you guys are pre-academy. I know you have a really busy day. So, class of two thousand and twenty-one, or twenty-two dash one, you are dismissed.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on our agenda to our fire chief report. Chief Isatelo.
Yes, thank you. Chair Urban, I'll pull up my notes here. So, good evening, Commissioner, staff and meeting attendees. Tonight, I will be presenting the fire chief report for Chief Hovis. Chief Hovis, D C Eastman, and P I O Heinz are presenting the Briar Annual Report and will be joining us later. In the meeting, my fire chief report will start with an update on COVID nineteen-related statistics for our nation, state, Snohomish County, and South County Fire. COVID nineteen update, Washington State Department of Health, the Washington State Department of Health reports there have been one million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two. Big number, total COVID nineteen cases as of February sixth. This is an increase of eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-four in the last week. Washington State has had eleven thousand, ninety-nine deaths, as well as fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirteen COVID-related hospitalizations to date. Updates for Snohomish County Health, there have now been one hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six total COVID nineteen cases in Snohomish County as of the seventh. This is an increase of four thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight in this one week period since our last meeting. One hundred and twenty-one patients are currently hospitalized with confirmed COVID nineteen in the county, and sixteen of those patients require ventilators. There are five thousand, five hundred and forty cases requiring hospitalization and nine hundred and seventy-three COVID nineteen-related deaths as of the sixth of February. COVID case update, Mike V will now be screening, sharing the county's two-week rolling period COVID case count graphic you are familiar with that shows the two-week variations of cases starting from January, two thousand and twenty-one. Case rates are at one thousand, six hundred and sixty-two per hundred thousand people. Preliminary data for the most recent two-week period shows cases are declining. The rate still is high, but it looks like we are going in the right direction. South County Fire employee-related data, currently, we have five employees off work due to isolation precautions for positive COVID nineteen. Total incidents with employees off work on quarantine or isolation to date is five hundred and twenty-one. South County Fire has one hundred and fifty-two employees who have tested positive for COVID nineteen. Hundred and nine have been with the latest surge, and forty-nine of these positives are potentially work-related. We still have a ninety-three percent fully vaccinated, uniformed employees here at South County Fire. Transitioning to our response graph, Mike V will now be screen sharing our South County Fire First Watch graph, which shows the one-week period since our last meeting through four P M this afternoon. South County Fire's actual call volume over the last week has consistently hovered at or above our normally expected average, with one occurrence of call volume exceeding the three-time standard deviation threshold alert. There were six hundred and twenty-seven calls for service since our last meeting. When compared to the same time period in two thousand and twenty-one, we are seeing a seventeen percent increase in call, and that increase is ninety-three calls over the same week period. Moving on to COVID nineteen, update specific to South County Fire. South County Fire has now transported nine hundred and fifty-two confirmed COVID nineteen positive patients to date to Providence and/or Swedish Edmonds. Ninety-three of those were in the month of January alone. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the chief report this evening, and staff would welcome any questions from the board.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Daniels?
On the second graph, I was curious about the little bar charts down below, the line chart.
Mike, can you pull that back up for us?
I believe it was the second chart that you showed.
Is that the the two-week case count?
Yes, I was curious what the dark green bar chart represented.
The dark green bar chart.
On the bottom?
Oh, so on the left side, that's the calls.
Okay.
So in that time period, that's how many calls were received within the RFA. So it kind of gives you the the bar chart at the bottom and then the the rolling period above.
Okay.
Which is the actual events is the blue line, so that's it should.
Thank you.
Does that make sense? Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving on to our union report with President Hoover.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff and guests. I'd first like to start out by also welcoming the recruits. It is always nice to see new, fresh, young folks, energized and excited to be in one of the best professions I think is out there, and it's exciting to see them come in at the opportunity to meet with them on Thursday morning. Unfortunately, I had just arrived from a long flight back from Baltimore the night before, so I was a little tired when I met with them. I was in Baltimore, I had the honor of being there to represent, help represent Washington State for, unfortunately, three firefighters who were killed in the line of duty in a structural collapse at a fire. Two lieutenants and one firefighter paramedic perished. A fourth firefighter was able to be rescued by his sisters and brothers, and was actually at the memorial service, surprisingly, because he had been in critical condition the week before, so I didn't, I didn't get a chance to see him or talk to him, but we are also happy to see those COVID numbers going down. It doesn't mean we have to let our guard down, we still have to be vigilant. I think that every time I show up for work, I get two or three emails that say I've transported, you know, COVID-positive patient, not last week, so they're still out there, we're still taking all the precautions and keeping vigilant on that. We're excited to be back at the bargaining table for locating twenty-eight's main contract. And it's nice to be back and trying to work on getting that wrapped up, or we're staying positive and hoping we can get that done pretty soon. With that, I will wrap up the eighteen twenty-eight report, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? I have an opinion, so seeing that Oregon and California are talking about loosening their indoor mask mandates, do you think that's that's approaching Washington anytime soon, and will that affect our operations?
You know, I, I'd probably question better suited for D C Maxwell, I am on the Force Protection Committee, but I have not made the last meeting due to scheduling conflict, so you know, I think if we can follow the science and the science proves it, I think we will go in that direction, but I don't know if, what the markers are looking at right now, so hopeful but cautious.
Yeah.
Chair Urban, I can can add a little bit to that if you'd like. Yeah. So there's three things that that we're watching, one is the the number of infections. And as I reported, that's on the decline, it's in the in the direction we we want to see. The second one is number of hospitalizations, and that has been dropping as well. And then the third and most significant one is the number of deaths. And that one just turned that corner as early as yesterday, so we're watching those as a as a team up here to, you know, start preparing for, you know, when we can can loosen our mask mandate in the stations and in in headquarters as we did, you know, prior to the to the last surge, so.
All right, thank you, Chief, and President Hoover. All right, moving on to item nine A, our introduction of our CFO, Chris Bothwell. And Hovis, Chief Hovis is not here yet, so Chief Isatelo?
Yeah, I I'm honored tonight to introduce the board to the newest member of South County Fire, Chris Bothwell. Chris Bothwell joined South County Fire yesterday on February seventh, so he's he's on his second day here, closing out his second day. And he will be leading the RFA's financial division, as you know, as our organization's first chief financial officer. Chris Bothwell joins the RFA from the city of Bothel, where he has served as Director of Finance since two thousand and nineteen. He brings nearly twenty years of experience in accounting and finance in the public and private sector. A certified public accountant, he earned his bachelor's degree in accounting at Central Washington University and completed the Public Financial Leadership Academy at the Evans School of Public Affairs at the University of Washington. Welcome to South County Fire, Chris.
Thank you for the introduction. I just want to share how excited I am to be a part of this awesome organization. I look forward to working with all the commissioners and advancing your goals, so I'm really thankful for the opportunity to come work with you all. Thank you.
My only question, Chris, is did Chief have to get you a bigger boot? It didn't look like that one would have fit you.
It's a little small.
I saw the the boot ceremony pictures, though. Welcome aboard, any questions, comments for any of the commissioners? We're trying to be nice and nice and late on you for your second day of of work. But very excited to see the work that will come from you and your office and help us make better decisions. Thank you. All right, moving on to item nine B, our priority, board priorities exercise for discussion. So in your packets is a list. Apologize doing doing this board priorities exercise by email, and as we have these now last two years is not as interactive and fun as it was that first year, where we could actually be in the same room and do the dot exercise. So in the packet, you'll see there's a list of the top vote-getting thirty-six total, and then I'll show the kind of individuals with submissions. In the past, we've always taken the, you know, traditionally in that kind of top ten and narrowed it, you know, from there and selected kind of our main priorities and then potentially some secondary priorities. So as you see, capital facilities plan, EMS paramedic school, kind of addressing the EMS staffing shortages, financial policies and fiscal administration, balance sheet funding levels of reserves were the top three vote-getters as far as in this exercise. And then from there, items four through thirteen, kind of all tied in the number twos, so wanted to open it up for your discussion from and by amongst the commissioners on which of those items, kind of four through thirteen, we think kind of need to to rise to that level. Advocate for which ones you're you're thinking, or potentially one that didn't make the list that should be elevated, so happy to take thoughts, comments, and see where we can land and see if there's a consensus on how many of these priorities we want to to set as our primary. And then if we want to have a secondary list as well. Commissioner Daniels?
I like item six, the cost of service determination. I think that that's a good one to be familiar with and have an understanding of.
Okay. I know that's that's definitely come, one that comes into play with our, you know, RFA expansion, the potential of of cities joining, and as we we saw with the Mill Creek discussion, trying to make sure that we're a proper properly accounting for the cost of what it takes to do this, this work. Any others that commissioners want to advocate for, or think should be eliminated from that kind of four through thirteen? Commissioner Teoflak?
Is there a certain number that we're trying to get to?
In past years, Commissioner Kenny, if you could, you know, weigh in, it was typically under ten, wasn't it?
It's been around ten, it's been eleven, I would think one year it might have been twelve, but it has hovered around ten, you know, one year I remember nine, so kind of around that ten, but it it kind of kind of depends on the feeling of the board at the time. Do you want a very targeted list, like your top three? Your top three are clearly your biggest get vote-getters, that would be a very targeted top list, and maybe everything else below that on a alphabetical list of what we've called other priorities in the past. Or if you want the larger list, do everything with two votes, maybe thirteen and above. And the other things on the other list, it kind of depends on how targeted you want your top list to be.
Agreed. So what do we want, something that's a smaller number? And, you know, if achieved, or if, you know, large efforts have been made towards, we can elevate things from a secondary list. I mean, Commissioner Lawrence, any thoughts? Commissioner Lawrence? No, okay, Commissioner Teoflak?
Yeah, I like the idea of the concentrated list with the others. So that's how I would like to have.
Okay. Do I, what's, you have an idea as far as what number of that concentrated, just to keep it as is, so what's already in that top three, or elevate any of from the 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 four through thirteen, and just have a, you know, a four or five kind of top list, and then?
Yeah, I feel because we already voted, like, we kind of know the opinion of the board. So it makes sense to to have the the top three as are concentrated, and then the the twos as others, like Commissioner Kenny suggested.
Okay. Any consensus, thoughts, agreement on that? And again, it doesn't mean if it's in the other, that it's not something that, you know, will not receive attention, it it stays within our ability to to bring forward, add to the agenda, have in discussions in in the committees as appropriate. Okay. So we'll clean this up and get it back out to everybody. And then we'll try to see what we can do as far as sprinkling these into the agenda as we move forward. Commissioner Kenny?
Well, beings that there would be our board priorities for the year, we should probably have a vote on this, so why don't I follow along? I like Commissioner Teoflak's idea. Why don't I just memorialize that with a motion that items from this list, items one, two, and three, capital facilities plan, EMS paramedic school, financial policies, that those be our our top three priorities. And then below that, everything else, items four through twenty, in an other priorities list alphabetically, not by vote number. And those would be our priorities list for two thousand and twenty-two.
Do you have a second on the motion? Commissioner Lawrence? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item nine C, our board commissioner appointment update with Melissa.
Hello, just to make sure everybody is aware, per the email that I sent, we have all of our candidates scheduled for the next meeting. And everything will start, we will conduct business, board business first, and then begin with the meeting, or begin with the interviews. We have three individuals beginning at approximately seven fifteen, I've scheduled them seven fifteen, eight fifteen, and nine fifteen, first being Alan Schaefer, second at eight fifteen, Micah Rowland, and third at nine fifteen, John Villan. And I will keep in touch with them as the meeting is progressing and make sure that, you know, if we need to get them in a little earlier or later, based on our discussion and timeline, we can do that. So if you have any other questions about that process, please let me know, and they've been notified that they will have approximately a forty-five-minute interview, and so we should be able to get that all wrapped up next week.
Melissa, are are the candidates being asked to not join the meeting until they're called upon? So they're not on the, they're not on the attendee side, listening to the questions and in advance?
Well, that is actually not being asked of them.
I mean, think thinking of, like, if we're doing this in person, they would probably not be in the room when we had done the question, so maybe that could be a request is that they kind of jump on the call, or if we're going to be taking them early, then you can reach out and waiting to jump on the call instead of being on the attendee side, listening and
Sure.
Just trying to keep it a little bit more, you know, fair that somebody doesn't get to hear the questions three times and then be ready for their answer. Okay, is that thoughts on that, is there anything? I think that's a fair way to do it, Commissioner Lawrence?
Yeah. Ten years ago or something, there was a vacancy when Millie Judge resigned, and I was interviewed by the commissioners, and it was three or four of us sat in the foyer before, and well, one went in. So, yeah, traditionally, that's the way it's been done, right, Jim?
Yes, yeah.
All right, Commissioner Daniels?
Is there a way that in Zoom that we do like some sort of room, like a breakout session or something? To try and?
The problem is our meeting needs to be open to the public, I mean, so we can't have it be a separate space, it would just be a matter of asking them to, you know, to honor that caveat and not join on on the the attendee side while the interview is going.
Okay.
And the the only part of the this process that we can do in a separate would be an executive session to discuss the candidates. And then we'd come back into open session to to essentially appoint. Okay.
And just to be, just to clarify, I just wanted to make sure that the board was planning to appoint or to hold have the oath of office at a following meeting and not after the, any appointment that happened at the next meeting, or if there was a different understanding of that.
Well, from my under, from my understanding, the the, you know, voting on would probably take place very late in that meeting itself. And as long as we've appointed before the the deadline for the county, we'd be fine. As far as them taking the oath, I would say it's just at the very next meeting in March. Does that sound good?
Thank you. Yep, oh, sorry, yeah.
But just seeing if there's any any difference of opinion on that. Okay. Great, looking forward to it, and you know, prepare a plan for, you know, a handful of questions. I know we're not going to have enough time to get through four or five per person, depending on answers and and length of the interview, but be good to have a handful of different questions in your back pocket, in case one of your questions is asked by somebody else. So looking, looking forward to it. Moving on to item nine D, our calendar update discussion and retreat date confirmation.
I wanted to find out if there were any other, if you wanted to discuss any other dates to put on the calendar for any upcoming further discussions. I know it's a little early, we're not thinking about the budget right now, but if you wanted to look ahead at calendar dates for any workshops or any other workshops pertaining to any other issues, just to get things on the calendar as people are starting to plan for the year. And then I wanted to confirm that based on all of the responses that I received for the retreat, that the eighteenth and nineteenth of March seem to be the dates that everybody is available to attend and I am, and my understanding is this would be an in-person retreat. All American Leadership has been requested to hold those dates. And I have been seeking out some quotes from local hotels, local areas that have retreat facilities, including Semiamu.
Now, as far as the, you know, the date, it seemed like that one worked, worked for pretty much all commissioners. As far as the in-person components, I know there was a discussion of a hybrid option that somebody wasn't comfortable or wasn't able to attend in person. Have we kind of figured out some level of how that could function? Was there also thoughts around, you know, COVID test requirements in advance, or what are we thinking? Because I know with staff, they're, you know, they're taking COVID tests on a daily basis when they come to work and just trying to throw out all the options to see if if what will make people most comfortable and make sure that we're doing it appropriately and safely.
The hybrid component can be accommodated at any venue. And we have Zoom set up, so that is that's a possibility. Or that's definitely something we can do. And just for safety purposes, I would agree that in any in-person situation, we should definitely consider testing as we're doing when we come into the office here, if we're going to be in person. The room up in Semiamu is big enough that social distancing can be accommodated. We can also remove any sort of, you know, dinner component where we're gathering together as a big group or inviting guests or spouses, so to speak, and limit the attendee list significantly from what we had done in the past as well.
Any thoughts on any of those ideas from any of the commissioners? Just want to make sure concerns and ideas are all heard, so we can move ahead. Commissioner Tioflak?
Yeah, so the retreat in like what, six weeks or so? I find that for just me personally, I probably wouldn't be comfortable being in person. Because the case rate is just so high, who knows what could happen between now and six weeks, but maybe we've been saying that for the past two years and nothing's changed much for me at least. So I would probably need the hybrid option for sure.
Okay. Any thoughts on, any additional thoughts on testing? You know, physical, physical way that it's, you know, the the retreat would take place, dinner, you know, non-larger dinner? Or is everybody just kind of good with whatever kind of comes? Commissioner Daniels?
Attendees, so other than the board itself, who else were you thinking would be in attendance?
I know Melissa, it was checking in, checking with schedules as far as chief and some others, what it was the how how far did that that spread as far as?
It only went to assistant, the chief and assistant chief, two, the two assistant chiefs, and I believe we only had two of the three available chief and I believe AC Acetelo, you were available and AC Fitzgerald, you were not.
I think that's switched. I'm not available and Fitzgerald, I believe, was was available.
Okay, there we go.
Okay. And and it's really, you know, a board retreat. We unfortunately really haven't had one since I've been on here. Previous to that, it was kind of in-person, you know, a lot more of of top-level staff and just had a lot more capabilities and a little bit more robust. So we're trying to do something that's a little bit more than what we did previously with All American Leadership, which was just a quick couple hours Zoom call. And just weaving our way through this as best we can, so. Okay, Commissioner Kenny?
Yeah, thank you. Well, I agree with Commissioner Teal Flack that you know, there are some concerns about case rates. I was just commenting to myself that our current case rate information from earlier on the calendar was it's coming down and it's at sixteen sixty-two per hundred thousand. But I did look back on the chart and four fifty-six was the amount in the number in late August, so we're still three times what it was in August. So it's better than the thirty, thirty, hundred, thirty, I don't know, thirty-two, thirty-six, thirty-nine, that it was a number of weeks ago or a few weeks ago, but still pretty darn high. So I know Commissioner Chan, Commissioner Chan wouldn't like me saying it because Commissioner Chan wants to have the retreat as soon as possible, but you know, do we want to think about pushing it back to a time in the summer when case rates are likely less and or make this just all online?
Valid, you know, valid points. I I kind of look at it, you know, with the numbers as, you know, August, August, September was Delta, which was a little bit more, a little bit more hazardous than Omicron seems to be. So I'm kind of trying to figure out this sliding scale of, well, it's four fifty then, worse than sixteen hundred now. And of course, you know, we'll know none of this in in current terms, it'll be all in hindsight, but yeah, I mean, that's that's a tough one. We really wanted to have have as much participation in something like this as possible. You know, a hybrid could still make that work in some sense. But is it, is it really that much of a requirement that we do this one in person or do it one day and try to do it by Zoom as we've been doing all of our meetings? And see what we can gain from that. I did notice that the 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 banquet for the the Snowmush Island County Fire Chief Association is pushed to March twenty-sixth now for their in-person banquet. So they're going ahead right after, the week after essentially our retreat would be. But I don't know that that's any bearing on on what we do. Commissioner Lawrence?
Well, we could all come down with the virus and on our weekend and then distribute it to the rest of the commissioners on the twenty-sixth.
Ah, Commissioner Lawrence. So let's, let's try to solidify this here and this next week, whether it's going to be in person or or Zoom. I don't want Melissa to be going too much over the top and trying to secure locations if if we all just kind of, you know, frankly, say what what would be the easiest, what would be the most comfortable? Given, given where things are. I mean, again, I'd prefer to do it in person if if possible. But I feel like we got something out of the that last Zoom-based All American conversation at least.
So we're talking about a two nighter here or what? I mean, overnighter?
Well, it was the initial plan. It wasn't necessarily an overnighter if it was going to be somewhere local. It would have been maybe an afternoon, evening, and then an all-day, you know, onsite.
Okay. Whatever you guys want for.
Okay. Commissioner Tioflak?
I was gonna say that during the last retreat, when we went into our breakout rooms where the group was smaller, I felt like the group that I was in, our groups, we opened up, had ourselves vulnerable and I think it was successful in that respect. So potentially, some people are more comfortable being vulnerable on Zoom than in person. I'm sure everyone's different. But I'm, I think Zoom is for me, maybe because of my generation more comfortable with it.
Okay. All right, well, we'll try to get an email out and see if we can finalize and solidify this. It's it's a moving target. I know it's kind of frustrating to have a a solid answer. But want to make sure everybody's comfortable and safe. And, you know, maybe if we do it by Zoom, we could incorporate some more staff that wouldn't physically be able to be there but could join for a portion on Zoom. All right, Melissa, well, you want chat tomorrow and we'll try to figure some stuff out. Okay. Thanks for sharing. I know everybody's got different situations and kids and all sorts of things. It's it's not not an easy thing to try to figure out right now. All right, moving on to our legislative update. Melissa?
So all of you have received the WFCA email that, and and I've also emailed you some information. And the biggest message, I think, from the WFCA during this report and this update is that there is a Senate Bill fifty-five sixty-five that passed the Senate forty-six to nothing. And I had not heard of, heard that it was super active prior to this. So this is a little bit surprising, but it is a, the brief summary is that it authorizes fire protection districts and regional fire authorities with more than ten million in annual revenues for three preceding consecutive years to designate a person with financial experience as treasurer of the district or authority. So that seems to be moving forward. And then another bill, House Bill seventeen thirty-five, which is a revision to the law enforcement bill that to enable a response to support fire and mental health calls, which is also supported by the Washington Fire Chief, seems to be moving forward very well as well. Those are the two highest priority bills that I can see that have some pretty good movement right now.
Any questions, comments? All right. Thank you for keeping on top of that, Melissa. Moving on to item nine F, our City Mill Creek pre-annexation agreement and temporary services agreement for action. It doesn't look like chief is back from Brier or Chief Eastman. So I'll throw it over to you, Chief Acetelo.
Actually, I'm not prepared to present anything. Chair Urban is that those two figured they wouldn't be longer than thirty minutes.
Well, apparently they're either, they must like what they're saying and they're holding them and asking lots of questions. So we'll just jump forward and then we can jump backwards when the chief is able to jump back on the call.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Move on to item ten A, our updated electronic signature resolution for review. Back to Melissa.
Hi again. So this resolution is just, it is an update to the resolution that was passed, I believe, last year regarding when, as COVID was getting started, we were trying to navigate the signature process for documents for the RFA. Because we were not meeting in person, we didn't have anybody coming into the offices. And the best way to get signatures taken care of was to create a way electronically to do this. We settled on the Adobe system or the Adobe Sign program and because it's integrated best with our tech, the technology that we have here. And this is an update to essentially help with a backup of EFT claims and quite a few consent agenda items that have not been signed yet. And to try to stay ahead of whatever auditing protocols might be coming into place or just to make sure that we keep ahead of the audit trail for these signatures. This is kind of, you know, been a, obviously with all things COVID, it's been something that we've had to modify and look at and try to stay ahead of, so to speak. And instead of just sending the board an enormous amount of paperwork to catch up on, I figured this would be a good way for us to, for me to be able to take on some of the responsibility of the signatures and allow for the consent agenda items to be signed simply by an email confirmation. What I did is I met with the, with our legal counsel because I felt like the previous request that I had made to the board to just blanket approve my signature on some of those items was possibly not not going to hold up to audit. So it was recommended by Schmellick Sitkin Davis that we add on that last paragraph to the resolution and make an amendment to the resolution.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments on on the edits or this topic? Commissioner Kenny?
Ms. Blankenship, and the intention in the draft, the proposed draft of resolution at page seventy-six of the packet is for matters that have been passed by the board already that were on the consent agenda?
Correct.
Okay. And there is a term at the bottom of that that I guess I am not familiar with in the law indicating a wet signature. I've dealt with the law related to signatures in lots of different ways over time, haven't seen that term. I take it it's a tempted a term of art. I would just say, suggest that it should be physical signature as opposed, because I don't know what a wet signature is. But that would be my only suggestion as to that. And well, well, there are, I mean, I don't know how many documents there may be that need to come to the board for electronic signature. I believe we use Adobe, Adobe Sign for signing those. And while those can be somewhat cumbersome in one's email inbox, it's just the cost to do in business and the convenience of being able to do it from home on your Fire District laptop or RFA laptop as opposed to going in and signing it in person, which would be another possibility. So um, you know, there's, there's some advantages to being on Zoom and being at home and doing this in this fashion. And then there's some disadvantages like that electronic signature, but that signature process does, does meet the the RCW, the law, state law requirements for for signature. So I don't think as a group we can be too, too complaining about that when it's really a convenience for us. Ms. Blankenship, I did want to, did want to make sure, though, that items that are not on the consent agenda, other items, you know, bigger items, ILAs. You know what the big items are. But those items are not used through this process that that would come through Adobe Sign for individual signatures, electronic signatures appearing on those documents. Is that, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this topic? Or adjustments? Okay. So I'm assuming this will be brought back at the next or future meeting for action. Is that correct? Great. All right. Still not seeing chief on the call. We'll move on to committee updates. A, we have not had any new intergovernmental committees meetings since our last board meeting last Tuesday. So nothing new to report there. Eleven B, capital facilities.
Pressure Kenny? No, nothing from capital facilities.
And as Commissioner Chan is not here, nothing from Snow nine one one. My, my goodness, Brier is really holding, pulling over. So really, at this point, we only have the Mill Creek pre-annexation agreement topic to discuss. And then we also do have an executive session for collective bargaining that we're supposed to be taking around eight-thirty-ish. Yes, Chief Fitzgerald?
Commission and
Commission and Chief Isatelo, I did attend the Mill Creek meeting this evening at 6:00 PM related to the next item, the remaining item for action. And I can just update the commission that the city of Mill Creek unanimously adopted the pre-annexation agreement, seven to zero. They also adopted their, their financial services plan, which returns tax dollars to the community. That also was unanimous, seven to zero. And they also adopted the South County RFA plan as provided, as proposed and as we've been discussing. So all those items approved by the city of Mill Creek Council, seven to zero. And they look forward to your action this evening in tandem to their action. So that next week, February 15th, they, they also passed a motion, again unanimously, to have a special meeting on February 15th to consider the ballot title for the notifying the county that they will be having the April 26th election to consider annexation into South County Fire. So hopefully that update is helpful and hopefully the need is, is communicated that the city is really looking forward to the commission's action on that in a, in a tandem manner as they provided this evening as well.
Thank you for that update. Now, we've got a number of meetings are all happening at the exact same time. So as we can see with Briar, well, why don't we take an early meeting and see if chief and DC Eastman are back and another 10. That'd give us a chance to go over that topic. And then if that's happening, then we could potentially still make our time with our collective bargaining executive session. So it's 7:52, go ahead and take a break for 10 minutes, jump back on at 8:02. Hopefully we'll have chief back and we can move forward with item nine F, our city of Mill Creek discussion.
Drop out of that meeting to join us here for this one last topic, so.
We're gonna get somebody that wears the same mask as DC Eastman and just have them swap chairs. Do they notice? All right. Well, doesn't look like we've got our other commissioners back on yet. For those who weren't on the call a second ago, Chief Isatelo said, it sounded like they were still on the Briar call, hopefully wrapping it up very shortly. I guess we could go on to commissioner comments and see if anybody wants to take up a few minutes.
Oh. Yeah, what do they call it? Filibuster. We need to fill.
Do you have green eggs and ham? Can you read that to us, Commissioner Lawrence?
No, but Chris raised his hand there. Commissioner Tio Flack.
I have a question from Melissa for the meeting next Tuesday. The interview started at 7:15. And so that's really awkward. But.
Oh, sorry. Approximately, we need to get a little bit of agency business done first and then we will move on. I approximated it at 7:15.
Okay, cool. That's quick. Cool.
And the hope is to let staff depart instead of having to sit through, you know, three hours of us having interviews.
Correct. So we have purposely met, I've met with staff to try to pare down the agenda for next week so that we don't have an enormous amount of business to take care of before we start the interview process.
Commissioner Daniels?
So Chris says, you're on day number two of the job. When would be a good time for me to pick your brain about what you do?
It depends on what your expectations are. You're welcome to reach out to me anytime, but I am still just kind of trying to figure stuff out. But yeah, reach out to me. I'd love to know what you're interested in. So at any time. Yeah, just give me a call or shoot me an email and let me know when you want to meet.
I'm a month into the job myself and so I'm still figuring things out.
Yeah.
He, he found his office in a comfortable chair. I think that's probably where you're at.
It's about right. I've managed to find my way to the bathroom a few times. I found some water, but yeah, that's about the extent of it.
That's a good start.
It sounds like chief should be back on in a couple of minutes. So we can continue to fill the minutes. Anything else? Yes, Chris Lawrence.
Well, a month or so ago, Commissioner Kenny and I had a discussion and we both had pretty much the same ideas in our head. And that is for, because the, because the fire service doesn't have an officer corps like the military or even the Merchant Marine. I mean, we have Merchant Marine Academy. So you come out as a licensed officer. And that, and that there seems to be somewhat of an issue because battalion chief seems to be a nice place to, to get a position to get to. And then it's kind of slows things up for people that want to progress into being assistant chief or deputy chief. And then eventually, you know, fire chief somewhere. So we, we were thinking about a fast track program. And I, I talked a little bit with Chief Isatelo when I would be in the office one day. And so anyway, that's just something to talk about since we're killing time. Anybody, anybody else have some ideas on that? Staff included.
Commissioner Lawrence, so the idea would be to encourage people to ascend from being a firefighter into the different leadership roles?
Um, I wouldn't say encourage. It's just that it's that opportunity there to, that they have a, we provide whatever assistance is that for them to do it. And I don't say encourage it. They kind of want to naturally ascend to that path themselves. But there, it's there. They hear about it. Okay, fast track. And the idea is that we may produce more people that want to be deputy chief or assistant chief than we have positions for. But then they would be ready to go to some other department, be assistant chief there. And so we'd be helping maybe smaller departments have some people in it with advanced leadership abilities, knowledge and such. So kind of, kind of cross pollinate, let's say, in that way. So.
Does the RFA do anything currently that this would maybe perhaps enhance what's already there?
Yeah, Chief Isatelo could probably address that because he told me some things that were sort of already do.
Yeah. So there are, you know, through the NFA, National Fire Academy and such, there's courses that are offered that are preparatory to chief level. There's also some certification, third party programs out there that you can go and get some, some education and some training. And you normally do a project as a team, you know, making, making up like, you know, an RFA or, you know, figuring out how benefit, benefit charge would work and presenting that. So there, there are numerous programs out there. One of the problems we've had in the last two years with COVID is an issue with bringing outside instructors in as well as sending folks out of the state to, to these programs or even within the state to these programs because of, you know, trying to protect our employees and, and be careful with, with bringing outside folks in. So I think as we see, you know, COVID hopefully here is not much of an issue where we can start to do that. We, we might see some more participation in those programs, but those are, are out there. We do advertise regularly and post offerings on our, our in-house training, electronic programs. So, so those are posted and, and we do have some people that are working through those. We also have numerous people that are taking advantage of the tuition program that we have. So with that, they're getting an actual degree, you know, a bachelor's degree or, or even a master's degree, which, you know, is very beneficial versus, you know, a third party or an institution's, you know, certificate of completion and such. And some, you know, becoming a, you know, a certified chief officer or such. So there's, there's numerous programs. A lot of us have worked through the IFSA type of testing. So you go to a class for a week and then you're rigorously tested through scenarios as well as a written test. And then that, that program with the IFSA certification goes across the country. So it's not just a Washington state specific thing. So if you were to retire from this organization and wanted to be a volunteer chief somewhere, kind of like Commissioner Lawrence is talking about, that those, those are recognized across the entire United States and actually, you know, across the world as well. So there's a lot of offerings out there. It's just a matter of bringing up the interest. And I think we'll see more participation once we, we get out of the, the COVID restrictions that we're in.
Because it sounds like there's quite a bit of meat already on the skeleton there. But there's no, no articulated vision that we have for, and have like protocol, the fast track program or whatever else. There is, there isn't anything quite that, that specifically called out. Correct. I'd like to hear President Tim Hoover comment on an idea of a fast track program. I mean, how would that fly with the, with the union, something like that?
Well, it is challenging because we do have steps that generally speaking in the labor agreement, you have to have certain progression from one level to the next prior to moving on to the next one. And so it does face a little bit of challenge to get from, say, firefighter to deputy chief. There isn't an easy fast track to do that. I think as Chief Isatelo indicated, there are steps you can take. Fire officer training, college courses, which are required in order to move up in our organization. And those things take some time to get there and then you move through the steps. And that's generally the way it happens in our organization and just about every other organization.
Okay. See, well, if, if, say, the board decided that we wanted to have a program and we called the fast track program, that would it meet with resistance, do you think? Or because right now you can, you can jump over battalion chief because that's, that's a, in fact, if I were a fireman, that's what I would, I would have been a battalion chief and that was, that would have been it. That would have been the position I would have liked to have. And that's sort of what I did with my career on the ships. So the, uh, so, so you, you can jump over battalion chief to deputy chief. Because that's probably the only way, you know, to get, to keep going, right?
Currently speaking, most deputy chief positions would require you to be a battalion chief first. So really, the, the only thing that currently we have is in the fire marshals area right now where the group, it was structured differently over all of the years. And we're working through that and some of those contract negotiations that we probably can't talk about here. But really, that's the only way right now for somebody that is a battalion chief to go on to deputy chief in our organization. Yeah. There, there really isn't a fast way to do that. And, you know, we want the experience in those positions as you move up so that you have knowledge in those positions and you're able to better understand the needs and help manage a division if you work through those different ranks.
All right. Looks like we've got chief, chief back. But any additional commissioner comments before we end that section? All right. So we're moving back to item nine F, our city of Mill Creek pre-annexation agreement, temporary service agreement for action with Chief Ovis and DC Eastman. Thank you for returning back. It sounds like Briar was riveted by your presentation and had lots of questions.
They sure did. And they've got new council members as well. So it was a reintroduction for some council members and an introduction for some. So it went well. And they've been asked to come back on the 15th and answer some follow-up questions and some more detailed questions regarding Briar potentially joining the RFA, which is good news. So commissioners for item nine F, we're on pages 12 through 72 in the packet. I'm going to start this off by turning it over to Deputy Chief Eastman for initial discussion review of where we've been and where we're at. And I don't know if the news has been shared about the city of Mill Creek's vote tonight, but okay, it has. Thank you very much, Chief Eastman.
So you guys, Chair Urban, you guys know that.
Yeah. Yes. Chief Fitzgerald gave us the update on kind of them passing everything 7-0 and where that everything landed.
Perfect. So, so I guess with that, I'll start with, we, we reviewed the, the pre-annexation agreement. We've reviewed the temporary services agreement. And, and as we talked about at the last board meeting, the two documents remain the same as presented at the last board meeting. And there was no requested changes. And so we're in a position to answer any final questions from the board and have presented these forward for the board to take action. And my understanding and talking to Rich is it would each, each individual, each individual item would be a motion independent of itself. And I guess I would answer any other questions that the board has.
Great. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Commissioners on the Mill Creek documentation? No questions, comments? I guess they, you know, entertain motions as DC Spence said, we need to take them each individually. And so feel free to raise your hand, motion, and we can, Commissioner Lawrence?
I make the motion that you're going to provide the words for.
Commissioner Lawrence. So I guess, just so we don't, we don't miss any, Chief Eastman. You want to kind of call out the, the different resolutions and then we can get a motion on?
So the, the first would be a motion to approve the pre-annexation agreement with the city of Mill Creek as presented in the packet.
That's the one. That's the one.
Second. First, Commissioner Lawrence. Second, Commissioner Daniels. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Kenny?
Uh, yes, I'm opposed to the pre-annexation agreement. I'm opposed to the annexation as I previously voted in December of 2021. I'll save the balance of my arguments for the motion on the pre-annexation. I'm sorry, the interlocal agreement for temporary services. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries for one. And the second, Commissioner, DC Eastman, the.
Motion to approve the temporary services agreement with the city of Mill Creek.
So move. Daniels, have a second on the motion. Commissioner Tio Flack. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Kenny?
Yeah, if there's no other discussion.
No.
I didn't see it. Okay. So my concerns about the, I urge a no vote on the interlocal agreement for temporary services. I start with my concerns about transparency from South County Fire. I start with my concerns about transparency from South County Fire towards the city of Mill Creek and the people of Mill Creek. Mill Creek, their their materials are they're very they're very sure that the South County Fire has promised no levy lid lifts in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. As we learned from Chief Eastman last week, our staff has promised no levy lid lifts in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four under this inter local agreement. Instead, there is a fixed cost. But that fixed cost and the fixed costs are located at page twelve of the document, which is located at page twenty seven of eighty one in the packet. The twenty twenty three fixed cost is five million nine hundred seventy eight thousand and eighty two dollars. The twenty twenty four cost is six million one hundred fifty two thousand one one hundred sixty three dollars. So the concern I have is that we're not being transparent about the fact that levy lid lifts, I believe, are in fact coming. And we should not, we should be transparent about that with the city. They shouldn't be assuming that there's no levy lid lifts. Our cost that we are charging to them should not be based on no levy lid lifts. Because our latest financial information from the November ninth, twenty twenty one board meeting, where we had our out years calculated based on the last financial position that the board took related to the twenty twenty two budget shows that we are in the red in all out years in our current expense account. So in twenty twenty three, we're approximately seven million dollars in the red. Twenty twenty four, almost nine million in the red. Twenty twenty five, almost eleven million dollars in the red and twenty twenty six, thirteen million dollars in the red. So we do have some reserve funds that we could pay to that we could use to cover those. The reserve funds won't go that far and we're planning to use those reserve funds for capital expenditures. We really don't have anywhere else. And, you know, we could cut the pencil budget, but that only goes so far. And you're not going to come up with those millions of dollars in that fashion. The reality is, one way or another, we're raising, we're going to get a levy lid lift in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five to pay for that. Or the benefit charge is going to go way above two percent. And remember, there's a promise from our staff that it'll be a two percent benefit charge increase only in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Something's got to give there. Taxes are going to go up one way or another to pay for all of the needs at South County Fire. And Mill Creek people should know that. That it's just fair. I don't know why we're not being transparent about that. The other piece that we're not being transparent about is our quarter billion dollar capital facilities measure for capital construction of renovation and building new construction of fire stations. Our capital facilities plan calls for two hundred and thirty four million dollars of needs at this point, which will only grow with time. And that doesn't include including adding station seventy six to potentially to that list and its capital needs. So there's been no sharing of that information with Mill Creek about how we want them to come on board so that they can vote and be part of paying for that quarter billion dollar capital bond measure. Now, that might happen in two phases, maybe even happens in three phases. It's not necessarily going to happen next year, but sometime in the near future, it's going to happen. And I'm not sure why we're not forthright with them about there's a quarter billion dollars that we want them to sign on to. So those are the two things that I'm concerned about our transparency. Now, you know, if they want to come on board at the going rate at South County Fire, you know, that would be great because we could use another city, more people, more population to help us subsidize the cities of Edmonds and Mount Lake Terrace. So that would be a good thing. But I think overall, particularly this temporary contract is bad for South County Fire. As Chief Eastman explained last week, we're subsidized in the city of Mill Creek in those contract amounts for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. To the extent of one million dollars each year for station seventy six. And we're getting no ownership under this. That's essentially paying rent, two million dollars of rent over two years and getting no ownership. We're giving them the transport fees, four hundred twenty five thousand dollars worth of transport fees. And we're giving them a hundred thousand dollars of fire marshal services. That's one point, one million five hundred twenty five thousand dollars of total subsidies per year. Why are we doing that? Why do they get subsidies? Why do I have to pay more? And the people of Linwood pay more in each of those years and Mill Creek is going to be able to pay less in each of those years with those subsidies. That doesn't make any sense. And it doesn't make any sense that we're paying for their fire station, particularly when we're not even getting ownership. We didn't pay for Linwood's fire station. And, you know, that that makes no sense to me. The transport fees, why should we give them the transport fees? We do the work. And why are we giving away fire marshal services? We don't do that for any other city. And in fact, Mill Creek is going to make money on fees for the services provided, at least the planning fees related to fire marshal services. So again, why would we subsidize them to that degree? The the contract seems two faced in the sense that it is saying one thing, but we're actually doing another. So for example, use of the fire station, paragraph four point one at page three of the contract. It says that we get the station at no charge. But in fact, we know that the cost that we're charging them is a million dollars. We're giving that we're paying a million dollars for that station. So it says we're getting it for for free. We're actually paying a million each year. For the transport fees, we are, the transport fees say that we retain the transport fees. And sorry, that's at transport fees. Transport fees at paragraph five point five at page five, that we retain the transport fees. But in fact, we're paying all the transport fees. So again, it doesn't make sense that the contract's saying one thing when in fact, something else is happening. I don't understand, you know, for the on the basis of what's good for South County Fire, uh, why Chief Hovis makes the no lid lift commitment to the people of Mill Creek and the city council of Mill Creek, but won't make it to South County Fire. I was very interested when I questioned Chief Hovis twice at the meeting last week. Well, why are you willing to do that for Mill Creek, but you won't do it here? Or will you do it here? And he gave an answer that clearly was not committing to offering budgets in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four that would have no live lid lift. I'm curious whether the board will take that same stance tonight and approve this contract because that's what it does. It's making a commitment to the people of Mill Creek, no levy lid lifts under this contract, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. But what about all the people in South County Fire? Why don't I get that commitment that there'll be no levy lid lifts? Well, I think common sense here at the board, you know why? Because we don't know what the expenses are, what it's going to cost in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. So we can't commit to that because we don't know what the costs are. The reality is, as I described, we're in the red every year going out. We're going to have to raise taxes one way or another. It's probably going to come through levy lid lifts. Why would we make that commitment to them but not to our own citizens? But yet that's what we do. To the benefit of Mill Creek, to the disadvantage of the people of South County Fire. That doesn't make sense to me. I'm not sure why we twist, kind of twist ourselves into a pretzel in order to attract Mill Creek. We don't have a relationship with them. We don't serve them. They've been, they're served by a surfer. And I'm not sure why we're trying so hard. It's clear that our staff has spent a lot of time in the last seven, eight months. We spent a lot of attorney dollars on this process. Why? Why are we spending time here and not on Breyer, Mount Lake Terrace, Edmonds? Those are the ones we really need to get at. Why are we spending so much time on Mill Creek and now twisting ourselves into a pretzel? Offering all these subsidies to Mill Creek in order to attract them. But why are we doing that? Does not make sense. What we should be doing is in paragraph five point two of the contract, five point two deals with twenty twenty five. And how if this if this contract goes on, if the board agrees to extend it into twenty twenty five at some point, how the payment amount is going to be determined? It's going to be determined looking at the last sentence in that. Such contract is calculated by applying the then existing RFA levy rate and EMS levy rate to the city's assessed value plus an additional amount representing the RFA's benefit charge that the RFA would have collected on properties within the city if it had been annexed. All you need is five point two. Just use five point two. Why don't they come across if if they really want our service, why don't they come across in with the analysis of five point two and just pay the same rate that everybody else is in twenty twenty three? That would be fair. They'd get good service. They'd pay the same rate as I do, the people in Lynnwood do. Why are they getting a subsidy, a discount in order to in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four? I think the answer or part of the answer for that is in kingdom building. This is an opportunity for Chief Hovis and the board to build our kingdom, our fire service kingdom. Which it's nice. I guess it's nice to build a kingdom. But the trouble is, we've, we, it's not really regionalization because Mill Creek's already part of served by surfer. So it's not really a regionalization issue. It's really building more territory. But why does that make sense at the cost to our taxpayers? It's really interesting to me that after all this time and at the last minute in December, Surfer came in with an offer. And our offer just happens to be just a little bit less than the surfer offer. I I think that's really interesting. I, you know, I don't know what happened behind the scenes, but they're very interesting. It kind of looks to me like, though, we're poaching the business of surfer. And in fact, they should be the ones that are, we should thank because they're the ones that are actually putting Mill Creek's feet to the fire and saying they've got to pay parity rates that they're no longer going to subsidize the city of Mill Creek. And Mill Creek's got to come to the table with it. Everybody else in the region is paying. That's a credit to surfer that they're taking that stand. But we look like we're sitting here just taking advantage of that, poaching this. And that's not a great place for us to be with a long term neighbor to our east who's going to be there year after year. And what kind of, what kind of, how will this impact our relationship with surfer over time? I'd be concerned about that because I don't, not so sure that this is taken, taken so well in the in the manner that we have handled this. So at the end of the day, this contract is bad for South County Fire and the people of Mill Creek. They just need to have their eyes open and be transparent about it. If they want to, if they know these tax increases are coming and they still want to join South County Fire, more power to them. So I urge no vote on this and a renegotiation of all of these terms. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries for one. Chief Eastman, so we've got the pre annexation, the temporary services.
It's all the business need to be addressed tonight.
Great. Thank you to you and staff for the hard work on this. I know it's about a year, year or more worth of back and forth. And we very much look forward to Mill Creek taking this to the voters in April and having it passed and not having to rely upon any temporary services agreement and have Mill Creek as a full fledged member of the RFA helping to spread out the cost of our services amongst all of our current RFA. And give our staff, you know, an additional populace to to serve and to continue to do good work. And we look forward to our other contract cities who've been with us for a long time doing the same. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
We'll be moving on to an executive session. Would be on item thirteen A collective bargaining present R C W forty two thirty one forty four. We'll call that for thirty minutes. We don't plan to take action at the end of that executive session. So for those who are to join that, please exit office call, join on the executive session link in your email. And we'll see you there in a few minutes. Thank you.
The executive session has been extended for fifteen minutes. The executive session has been extended for fifteen minutes. The regular meeting or this, excuse me, the special meeting has been called back to session at nine thirty five P M. And without objection, the regular, the special meeting has been adjourned. Have a great night.